So Radha Radha, good morning, good evening everyone. Very warm welcome to today's edition of Daily Wisdom. Let me share my screen and we will get started with today's session. And today's session is going to be slightly different because we have Anuman Jyoti today, right? So we will have a special session on Anumanji today. We have a hard stop at ten today, right?
As of now, yes.
Okay, let's get started with our opening prayers like you asked us to. Guru Brahma, Guru Vishnu, Guru Devok Maheshvarha, Guru Sakshat Par Brahma, Tasmay Sri Gurude Namah. Vasudevasutam Devam Kamsva Janu Ramardhanam Devaki Paramahandam. Krishnam Dvande Jagat Gurum. Krishnam Dvande Jagat Gurum. Okay, so Radha Radha, good morning, good evening to all of you. Very warm welcome to today's edition of Daily Wisdom from Bhagwad Gita. So let's get started. So first of all, I wanted to wish everybody a very happy Anuman Jyoti. And that is what we are going to talk about Anumanji in today's session. Let me pick up the shloka that I have picked up. So I've gone to eighteen dot five six. I'm going to recite it. We'll take three hands and then I'll tell you I have picked up this shloka. Machitthar Sarva Durgaani Matrasada Tari Shasi Ath Chetvam Ahankaran Nasro Shasi Vinak Shasi. Okay, let's take three hands. Now, we often do, we go back and forth and today we have gone really forward in Bhagwad Gita. And you'll you'll see why I picked up this shloka today because we're going to have a special discussion. Yes, Sandhya, go ahead. We'll take three hands.
Radha Radha. Machitthar Sarva Durgaani Matrasada Tari Shasi Ath Chetvam Ahankaran Nasro Shasi Vinak Shasi.
Very nice. Thank you, Sandhya. Let's take two more hands.
Please, Radha Radha.
Finish it.
Machitthar Sarva Durgaani Matrasada Tari Shasi Ath Chetvam Ahankaran Nasro Shasi Vinak Shasi.
Radha Radha. Radha, Riaji, please, last but not the least.
I can't, yeah.
Radha Radha.
Radha Radha.
Machitthar Sarva Durgaani Matrasada Tari Shasi Ath Chetvam Ahankaran Nasro Shasi Vinak Shasi.
Very nice, thank you, Radha Radha. So this shloka, see, we are on five dot one five right now. I picked up this shloka because today is Hanuman Jyoti. And we are going to talk a lot about Lord Hanuman today. And Lord Hanuman, because he's ishday with Lord Ram, right? We know that his name comes along with Lord Ram, right? And in this particular shloka, God is saying, if you always remember me, by my grace, you should overcome all obstacles and difficulties. And we'll talk about Lord Hanuman because he was doing Ram Kaj, the seva of God. And his mind would always stay absorbed in Lord Ram. How he was able to navigate through all the obstacles and difficulties along the way when he was going to, you know, in Sundarkhand and Ramayana, which is dedicated to Hanumanji's seva, where he's able to navigate through all that. And then he goes on to say, but if due to pride, you do not listen to my advice, you will perish. And we'll also pick up some instances where Hanumanji was instrumental in breaking pride of a lot of lot of people, right? Well-known and famous people. I must say that, okay? All right. So let's get started. Happy Hanuman Jyoti once again to all of you. And Anumanji is the epitome of Dasse Bhav. The different bhavs that we have spoken about in Bhagwad Gita as our scriptures tell us that when we worship God, one aspect of God is his almighty, almighty power, right? His magnificent form, as you can see, where you you bring in the Ashwari chintan of God. But devotee says, okay, let's leave that aspect aside because when we think about that, it's like how big God is and how insignificant I am. So our scriptures tell us that instead of thinking of God as a magnificent identity much beyond your reach, it's better to build that personal connect with him. And that's where the brajaras, right? There are six saints tell you that when you worship God, when you have, when you can simulate that proximity to God in your head, starting with Dasse Bhav. Dasse Bhav means you you have access to God. It's like even in material world, a servant has access to your room. Right? Dhi Dhi Khi, so that that person can discharge the duty towards his master. So it starts with Dasse Bhav. Then it, you know, the higher bhav is called the sakha bhav where you can consider God as your friend and the higher than that is vatsalle bhav and then higher than that is madhurre bhav. And to begin with, even below Dasse Bhav is called shant bhav where you are thinking of God as a king. Subject-object relationship where there's a there's a formality, air of formality and you cannot just meet king just like that. So Dasse Bhav is where you have already started building a connect with God. And Hanumanji is the epitome of Dasse Bhav. The seva that he discharged to Lord Ram during his avatar call, it was a perfect, how a perfect servant would discharge that duty, right? And in fact, Lord Ram said that, you know, oh, Hanuman to, in fact, in, he said that in, he tells Hanuman that, oh, Hanuman, to release myself from the debt of one service you performed to me, I shall have to offer my life to you. For all other devotional services done by you, I shall remain eternally indebted. Okay, that is the parikashtha epitome or the perfection of Dasse Bhav that Hanumanji exhibited during that avatar call. So let's talk a little bit more about it. So let's see a quick video from Swamiji and then we will talk more about the aspects. So let me stop share and share again because I have to share sound also, which I guess I forgot sharing for the first time. Are you able to see again? Let me play it.
We can see it in white.
Okay, let me play it. Shankarji has got eleven forms and the highest rudra is Hanuman. So it is said that he loves this Ram Katha so much wherever the Ram Katha begins. Hanumanji, you know, often an asan is placed for him, but he doesn't even need an asan. He comes in any form that he wishes and he does the raspan of this Ram Kathaamrit. There is a story, once in Mumbai's commercial area called Madhubag. At the end of the katha, you know, they say, katha visarjan hota hai suna ho veer Hanuman. The katha is ending, Hanumanji, now you can depart. So at the end of this katha, on the third day, the katha vachak, he offered stuti to the asan of Hanuman. An advocate got up from the audience and he said, what is this jokri you do on this asan? How do you know that there's Hanuman sitting? So Panditji said, all right, I will answer your question tomorrow. All night long, he prayed to Hanuman. Next day, he again placed the asan and he did the afwan, Hanumanji, please come and reside. He then asked that advocate present, the advocate got up, he said, come, lift the asan. So it's a true katha, he tried his best, but he was unable to move the asan. He admitted his defeat and offered pranam. There is an instance, you all have heard, that once Mother Sita was giving gifts to everyone. Hanuman was wondering, what is she going to give to me? She took a mala and gave it to him. Hanuman took one of the beads and he cracked it. His mouth and he threw it. Then he took another bead, cracked it with his mouth and threw it. So somebody said, why are you disrespecting the mala that Sita has given? Hanuman said, I am checking if the image of my Ram is in this bead. If it is not there, what uses it to me? So then they questioned Hanuman that, all right, do you have a Ram in Sita in your heart? If you don't, then what uses it? At that time, Hanuman tore his heart apart and there he showed the images of Sita and Ram installed. Hanumanji in his huge form, he stood on a hill to jump off. Now he pressed that hill with so much of force that it got squashed. Jaihi giri pair dehi hanumantha chale usada paatal turanta. And he took off. Now he is going on Ram Kaj. So obstacles came of different kinds. From the earth, from the water, from the sky. The first of all, there was a golden mountain that arose from the ocean. This was Mena Parvath. So the mountain said to Hanumanji that you are going so far, you must be getting tired. Come and relax on me and then after that you can continue. Hanumanji, he said, in Ram Kaj, where is the relaxation? I will do my work and then afterwards I will relax. Nevertheless, to show respect to the mountain, he touched it and continued. Now, Surasa came, a sarpani, a female snake, she raised her hood big into the air and said, I am exceedingly hungry, you seem to be very tasty, I shall eat you for my lunch. So Hanumanji said, that's all right, do one thing. Let me finish and my work and then I will come back and I will myself fall into your mouth. Surasa said that I am a snake, when I feel hungry, I eat my own eggs. You think I'm going to leave you like this? So Hanuman said, all right, then eat me. Hanumanji increased his body to one yojan size. So now Surasa was obliged to open her mouth to an equal size. Like when you eat pani puri, you have to open your mouth wide. So Surasa made it one yojan, Hanumanji increased to two yojan. Surasa made it two yojan, she, Hanumanji increased to four. So four to sixteen, sixteen to thirty-two, thirty-two to sixty-four. So when she increased sixty-four. Jasa Surasa badhana badhava ta suddhuguna kapirupadikhava. At sixty-four yojan, suddenly Hanumanji became small. He entered her mouth and he said, all right, I have fulfilled your wish. I entered your mouth, I am leaving now. So in front of the first obstacle, Hanumanji showed humbleness. In front of the second obstacle, he used his intellect. You see, all kinds of obstacles will come when you do bhakti. So you have to handle them in accordance with their nature. Now he went further ahead and there was a demoness called Sinika. So Sinika used to eat the birds by catching, pinning their shadow. And those poor birds would be forced to come and she would eat. So she grabbed Hanumanji's shadow while he was flying. Now Hanumanji said, here's the next obstacle. This time he gave her a box and knocked her out. Sometimes you need to use force where people will not listen to intellect etc. So he continued and he crossed the hundred yojan ocean and landed in Lanka. Now he made his form normal. And he looked over the wall into Ravan's Lanka. He saw a golden city full of opulence. Soldiers are patrolling in different places, the demon soldiers, lots of beautiful women, lots of places for enjoyment. So Hanuman saw that there's a wall around and four gates. He decided that the best time to enter will be night time. So at night, he made his farm even smaller. And he was making his entrance when guarding that entrance was a rakshasi called Lankini. So Lankini said, hey chor. Hanumanji thought, the biggest thief is inside. I'm going for Ram Kaj and she's calling me thief. So he boxed her and Lankini fell flat. Now she should have got annoyed, she should have got frightened, but she came and offered her pranam to Hanuman. She said, the words of Brahma ji have come true. When Ravan got hold of this nagari, at that time I was fed up with him. So Brahma ji told me, do not worry, when a monkey reaches here and knocks you out, you can understand that the end of Lanka is near. So I offer my respects to Ram's sevak. Hanumanji went into the city, he walked around. Since it was night time, the rakshasas, rakshasis were sleeping. He also entered the room of Ravan, he was also sleeping with his ten heads. So Hanumanji was inspecting the city. And in one place, in one house, he saw outside tulsi was growing. Hanumanji said, in this city of demons, how come this tulsi growing? So while he was contemplating it, Vibhishan woke up. And he started chanting the name of Ram as was his habit, Ram, 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 Ram. Hanumanji was more astonished. So they started speaking, Hanuman said that you are a devotee of Ram. How come, how do you manage to stay in this city like this? So the dialogue ensued. Vibhishan said, I am a devotee. I have been taking Ram, 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 Ram. But I have not received Ram's grace. What is the reason for that? Hanuman said, you did not receive grace because you were taking the Ram nam, but you are not doing the Ram Kaj. When Ravan kidnapped Mother Sita and brought her here, knowing that it is wrong, why did you not object? So Vibhishan promised that henceforth, he will definitely do the Ram Kaj. And if there is a wrong, he will speak up. Vibhishan said, that today I know that Ram's grace has fallen upon me. Ab Mohibha Bharonsa Hanumantha Binuhari Kripa Milahi Nahisanta. Without the grace of Ram, I would not have met a saint like you. So Hanumanji then from there he proceeded. It had become morning time. So he reached this garden. He jumped up on the tree and Sita, when he saw her, she was in a very pitiable condition. She was thin and lean and sad in separation from Ram. And she was practically not eating anything. So Hanumanji thought, how should I reveal myself? So he took the mudrika that Ram had given and threw it in front of her. Now when she received the mudrika, she immediately recognized. She said, where did this come from? Who has thrown it here? So Hanumanji, he started relating Ram Katha prasangs. Relating the Ram leela. This is Hanumanji's style. He often does this. He starts relating the Ram leela. So Hanumanji, sitting on the tree top, started relating. In one way, some people said, he started the parampara that the katha vachak should sit on top. So Sita was able to hear, she said, such sweet words, they are so pleasing to my ear like music. Who is this? Please reveal yourself. Hanumanji jumped down and he said, ma, I am Ram Dut Anuman. I am Ram Das. So Sita did not look at him. She said, how do I believe that you are? He said, I am telling you. Sita said, even Ravan said the same thing and then he kidnapped me. So Hanumanji said, ma, I take a vow at the lotus feet of Kripa Nidhan, our Prabhu Ram, that I am his sevak. So when Hanumanji took the name Kripa Nidhan, at that time Sita ji realized because she was the only one who used to address him by that name, Karuna Nidhan. So when Hanumanji said Karuna Nidhan, Sita ji understood. So Hanumanji assured her that my Prabhu has sent me with the message that do not worry, he is going to come and get you. Hanumanji said, I have the power that I can put you on my back and I can take you across. But that will not be appropriate. So Sita ji said, you have that much of power, but you are a small monkey. So when Sita ji said like that, Hanumanji increased his body and became huge. Sita ji was pleased. She blessed him. Asta Siddhi Navanidhi Kedatha. So she blessed him to have the asta siddhis and the navanidhis. Hanumanji became small again. So Hanumanji said, mother, do not worry, I shall go back, give the message to him. He will bring the army and he shall conquer Ravan and liberate you from here.
Right. So Lord, it's a beautiful story, coming back to Hanuman Jyoti and the shloka that we have, see, Anumanji. In this, like in the shloka, Lord is very clearly saying that by my grace, you shall overcome all the obstacles and difficulties. And how do you overcome? He gives you the wisdom and the things that are needed to overcome those, right? If you look at Hanumanji, when it came to that mountain, he was very respectful when it came to Surasa. You know, one of the lessons that, you know, you can take out from that story is that when she was increasing her mouth, he was increasing his size. So basically you have to be greater than the difficulty, you know, more persistent than the difficulty. And then of course he used it intellect and then he boxed a few people along the way. Lankini, he could have done that, right? Did the word go right? Because Anumanji is fairly powerful. You know, when as a child, he is the first rudra, the most powerful rudra of Lord Shiva. He has eleven rudras and he is the first one of them. And even as a child, he had amazing powers. One day he woke up in the morning and he was feeling hungry and he saw that, you know, orange sun just coming out of the horizon. And then he thought it's some kind of a fruit and he tried to grab it and, you know, eat it. And Indra got freaked out, you know, what kind of power this small baby has. And then he wielded his vajra on him, which made him unconscious. And when Vaayudave came to know, he is pavantputra, right? He came to know that this is what Indra has done, Vaayudave withdrew his energy from earth. And then people started feeling miserable and then he, Indra had to apologize. Shiv came and revived Hanumanji and Indra to make up, to make amends for what he had done. He said, okay, I give you a boon that your body is going to be more stronger than the vajra himself. And then other celestial gods also gave him powers that nothing of the five, the five elements that we have, the fire, earth could, you know, water could be invincible or could conquer him. And then he got a lot of, collected a lot of boons. He collected that asta siddhi, Navanidhi Kedatha from Mother Sita, but he was collecting boons even earlier, right? So the still gods have given him boons, had given him boons, which would enable him to travel anywhere, stay healthy, make his form big or small or be charenjivi. In fact, Hanumanji is charenjivi, he's alive even now. And it is said like Swamiji so beautifully explained that he is present in all the Ram Katas. There's a, there's a separate place that is kept for him in every Ram Katha. So this power that comes, it is enabled by God, right? His grace, he said, you can overcome all obstacles. Even when Angad went as a peace messenger, he did a mini swamwar of himself. You know, when he planted his foot and said, okay, if anybody can lift it, then Mother Sita is yours. Now, can you believe anybody giving, you know, this kind of a commitment? What is the power that is enabling him? He had firm faith that Lord Ram is with me. And he, he was so confident about that thing that nobody is going to win that swamwar. And the moment he's, you know, put his fist down on the palace, you know, the, the mukuts, those crowns that people in that court room were wearing, they flew out. And one of the crowns actually flew like a UFO and fell at Lord Ram's feet, that was Ravan's crown. But then he challenged that if anybody would do that, okay, there will be no war and Mother Sita is yours and nobody could do that. So that power, where did that power and that resolve and that confidence, confidence come? That is enabled by God himself. Okay, so that is a key thing. Now let's move on and just get into a few more. Learn a few more things about Lord Hanuman. I'm sure you would have come across those stories. So if Mahabharat in Bhagwad Gita, by the way, Kapidhuvaj, if you know, you see this chariot? In this chariot, Hanumanji is sitting as well. So he was seated on top of that chariot which Arjun used throughout the battle. So that's when he was fighting Karan, when he was fighting Karan, you know, the chariot was shaking, maybe moving a few inches here and there. And then he was shooting an arrow back to Karan, his chariot was going a few feet away. But Lord Krishna was applauding the Karan's effort more than Arjun's effort. Arjun was like, why? I mean, I'm moving his chariot more than he's moving mine. Why are you so impressed with this guy? He said, you know what? First of all, I am seated on your chariot. Secondly, you've got Hanuman, great Hanuman, seated right on top of that. And still he is able to move your chariot. That is much more commendable than what you are able to achieve. And in fact, it is said when the war was over, he said that, he told Arjun, don't, you know, let you first get off. And Arjun got off and then Hanumanji got off and then Krishna got off. And the moment he got off the chariot, tore down to ashes, okay, it was burnt to ashes because the chariot was already dismantled. It was only with Krishna's power and Hanuman's power that it was intact throughout the battle, okay? So Kapidhuvaj, Hanumanji was present there as well. Now let me tell you a few stories of pride, how Hanumanji broke pride of some of the famous personalities you would have heard about, okay? So first it was Mr. Bhim. So Bhim was there, he was very proud of his, this thing. In fact, Bhim, you know, how much power did he have? If he would throw an elephant, it would go out of the orbit of earth, acquire centripetal energy and keep rotating like a satellite. Now don't laugh on that, okay? This is something that Vashimpai was telling, had told to Janmaja as well and Janmaja started laughing. He didn't believe it truly happened. He didn't believe it truly happened. Okay, that much energy he had, where the elephants would keep rotating like satellites and Vishyam Pai raised his hand and one of the elephant came down on the ground with a thud. So this Bhim had a lot of pride of his energy and Hanumanji, he was lying down, you know, with his tail from the, this guy Bhim says, you know, move your tail aside. So Hanumanji said, why don't you move it yourself? He said, don't you know who I am? So he had a lot of pride. He said, who are you? He said, I am the great Bhim, you know, you don't, haven't you heard how much power I do have and you are an old man, can't you move aside? He said, if you have so much of power, why don't you lift it and move it aside all by yourself? And Bhim could not. Until Hanumanji gave him darshan and then finally he was like, okay, sorry about that. Then Hanumanji did not stop there. Then what happens? So Hanumanji, what happened was Dwarkadhish Krishna said, can you call on Hanuman? I want to meet him. So Garud, Garud who is Naransay, he came to Hanumanji and he said, Dwarka, Dwarkadhish is summoning you. He wants to meet you. So Hanumanji said, who is Dwarkadhish? I don't know any Dwarkadhish. I only know Ayodhyaadhish. Okay. So get lost. He told him that. So he was like, what happened? And he said, I know the only the one who holds the Hanushman, you go, we know, right? His ishtadeva is, although he knows that, but Hanumanji also had a motive to enact that leela. So Garud goes back and tells Krishna that he said, I don't know who is Dwarkadhish. He said, okay, tell him. He's a Ayodhyaadhish is calling him. Okay, the one with Hanushman, Sita. Then he comes back again and tells Hanuman, okay, your Ayodhyaadhish is calling you. He said, really? My Ram is calling me? Where? He said, he is there in Mathura at that or Dwarka there. So he said, sure, I'll come and meet him. So Garud said, why don't you sit on me? I'll take you in a jiffy. Right? Because Garud can fly really fast. Hanumanji said, I told you I can go there. I'll reach there. He said, no, no, come. You are old, you know, I can take you pretty quickly. Hanumanji boxed him, like he boxed Sri Lankini and Garud fell in the ocean. And while, while he was flapping his wings and, you know, drying himself up so that he can go back and relay the news back to Krishna. Hanumanji had already reached there. And when he reached there, Sudarshen Chakra came. He also had a pride. Right? That I am the gatekeeper and he said, who are you? And he said, I have to meet, you know, my Lord Ram here. And he said, no, he started asking me a question. Hanuman said, I don't have time to waste. He took him and put him in his mouth. Okay. And then just walked inside. So when he walked inside there, Krishna had gotten ready. He, he had gotten rid of his crown and all that. He came in a Ram form. Anyway, the only thing that separates Krishna and Ram is the peacock feather or Hanushman, right? So he picked up that and then there was Satyabhama there. He said, you could get into that attire of Sita. Okay. Hanumanji, Hanumanji is coming to have our darshan. And Satyabhama was very proud of her beauty, that I'm, I'm the most beautiful queen of Krishna here. So nevertheless, Hanumanji goes there. She was pride of, so he broke the pride of Bhim and then Garud and then Sudarshen Chakra. So Krishna, um, and then Satyabhama was sitting, standing right next to him. And then he said, what's going on with your mouth? You know? And then he opens his mouth and Sudarshen Chakra just flies away. He said, okay, I need to save my life first. And then it flies away. And then he says, he, you know, pays his obeisance to Krishna, which is in a Ram form. And then she's also standing and then he says, father, who is this maid servant you have kept along with your servant, right? So, so that's how he broke Satyabhama's pride as well. So that is what Hanumanji's thought are these, some bit of tidbits of stories that I've heard, which I found pretty fascinating. So Sudarshen Chakra and all these, this happened. But nevertheless, if we have to learn some lessons, he broke their pride as well and he is charenjivi. He exists and I've heard even at Ayodhya temples, some people claim that they have seen Hanumanji there. I don't know how far it is true, but might be true, right? It was a historic event and there's a good reason Hanumanji was present there. He is not going to disclose himself, uh, but then, um, he is charenjivi and he is supposed to exist until the end of Kalayuga. That's how it is. Some of the lessons from, um, Hanumanji, if we have to learn. Practical lessons from that sense, unflinching devotion to Lord Ram. He had an unflinching. We see he opened up his heart and showed Lord Ram there. In fact, when they were, Lord Ram had gone to Lanka and he was camping outside Lanka before the battle ensued. One of the evenings, they were just having, you know, we have a bonfire and do the party. They were doing some party with all the people and just, you know, uh, sharing musings about the moon that they were seeing on the sky. So everybody was saying, what is this black spot in moon? So everybody was telling, okay, what they think that black spot is. Somebody was saying, okay, it's, it's the poison, you know, when the Jumudram month had happened. Somebody gave some other reasons, some other. And then Hanumanji's turn came. He said, you know what? What I can see in that moon is that my Ram Bhagwan is also Savala. He is also seated within that. So that was his level of devotion. He would see, see a, see a Ram, sabjakjani, he would see Sita and Ram everywhere. So he had an unflinching devotion. In fact, there's a story goes that then they were trying to build the, uh, bridge with boulders. The boulders were sinking. So then until he started like writing Ra and Mur on both of them and they would come together and not sink at that point. So, uh, he would pretty much relate everything to God and, um, even with Mother Sita, there's a story that goes, right? He asked her, why do you put this sindoor? And she said, it's pleasing to, uh, Lord Ram. He said, really? And then he poured everything, all the sindoor, entire body. That is why if you see Hanumanji, uh, you see him in orange color because he pours sindoor so that he becomes even more pleasing to his ishtadeva. And what people do is put sikkas, coin there. I don't know why they do that. And I don't know why Hanumanji gets most requests from bachelors to get married, even though he is himself an eternal bachelor. Okay. So, uh, but for some reason it happens. Anyways, so now exclusive focus on the goal. So when the mountain offered itself for rest, he said, no, I have some Ram kaj to do, so rest can wait, right? So he was very focused on the job at hand. So this is a management lesson as well, right? From that, overcoming obstacles with discerning intelligence, right? How he tackled, uh, Shri Sansehika. He will not pick up battle just for the sake of, he was very optimized. Even Lankini, he, he could have boxed all of them in one shot. But he said, okay, let me not waste my energy, wait for the night and then take on a lower, slow, you know, small form and then peacefully get inside. He did not waste his energy just like that. He had a compassionate diplomacy towards Vipeshan as well, right? Um, he's trying to understand who you are and why, how you can attain, draw on God's grace, Lord Ram's grace. Because he said that although you take Ram's nam, but when you do Ram kaj, then that will enable you to draw grace. And he said, why don't you make me meet my spiritual mother and then I will make you meet my spiritual father. Because we both have the same spiritual father and mother. Attitude of servitude, we know, right? I mean, when, even when Lakshman, uh, was, uh, lying unconscious, he pretty much picked up the entire mountain and, and came there and, and, uh, we know that how he, um, he, like he's the parikashtha or the epitome or the perfection of service attitude towards God, right? Uh, and in fact, one of the sevas, when it came to, when they all came back to Ayodhya after the battle was over. So there was some discussion going on about the sevas of God, right? So Ram, uh, Ram's charan, everybody wants to do that seva. So Lakshman and Sita got even feat each. And everybody split the seva amongst themselves until, um, there was nothing remaining. And Hanumanji said, what seva is there? And then I think the seva that he took was that whenever Ram would yawn, he'll do chutki. So he said, that's the best seva because now he can only focus on his face all the times. That turned out to be the best seva and that the seva he took upon himself. So his, uh, attitude of seva and love for God, Ram was unparalleled. Humbleness, diplomacy, courage, we've already seen that and discrimination regarding when to use shakti, that is very, very important. He was very, very optimized. He will not show his strength just for the sake of it. And even though he could have taken Sita all alone through his own power, he said, no, that will not be, um, appropriate, um, or you know, for a sevak to take on the job of his own. Because I would let Ram take that honor as opposed to doing it massively. Could have killed Ravan, pretty much could have accomplished anything at all, right? So with that, we celebrate, uh, happy birthday to Hanumanji. Um, I'm sure there was a cake cutting that happened in the temple as well. I couldn't make it. So happy birthday to Hanumanji. Anything related to Hanumanji or anything inspirational that you find you want to share, please go ahead. I've shared some tidbits that I knew about. Okay, we have, all right, we do have time. I covered it fairly quickly today.
Yeah, we have Kumarji.
Kumarji.
Jai Shri Ram, Kumarji.
Sure, this will be very, you'll be ecstatic today. That's your Hanumanji's birthday. So yes, please go ahead.
Yeah. Jai Shri Ram, Jai Hanuman. Uh, yeah, we all know that, uh, Hanumanji is, uh, charenjivi and, uh, what, what, what else, you know, would be better than, you know, getting to meet him in this lifetime? That would be the greatest thing of all. You know, it's equal unto meeting Ram, I would say. So, um, you carry, you just covered almost everything, Nithinji. Uh, I, I'm sure you did your homework and all that stuff. So I had all these things and then I just ticked off everything that you said. Just one thing, which of course you partially talked about, what happens is, uh, during the coronation, patabishe, uh, when Ram goes back. Um, Sita is giving out gifts for everyone, right? Everyone who helped and even, you know, everyone else. And then she gives, uh, um, uh, pearl beads, uh, mala, a necklace, mala to Hanuman. And Hanuman immediately starts biting on that each pearl and then spitting it out and people are so gassed. I'm like, first thing, it's a very, um, it's a pearl necklace, which again, even in those days probably was considered big, but who is giving it? Ma, the world's mother is giving it and he is doing this. They were so gassed and then, um, you know, uh, I don't know who Ram or Sita asks him or someone else asking, who, how, how are you doing it? He says, I'm just trying to see if Ram is here. If Ram is not in this, it is useless for me. And I think the court, people in the court get upset and I'm like, you know, you, you're thinking too much of yourself, you know? Uh, do you have Ram in you, right? And that's when he splits his chest and shows Ram in there, you know, what a great sight it would have been. Well, you know, uh, to see it real, but even if we imagine it is such, such so powerful. So powerful was Lord Hanuman and so powerful was his love for Lord Ram. And you know, you just cannot separate them and, uh, as I have always said, you know, like, uh, Ram is searching for his, even though he is God, he has to play the part, he's searching for his wife. He's, um, you know, hugging all the trees and saying, where is my Sita? Where is my Sita? Right? And, and in a moment, this, uh, uh, this, uh, scene comes where Hanuman goes and meets him. He disguises himself as a Brahmin and, you know, um, talks to him, but then both can see through each other because they are so, so powerful. They are already enlightened and all that stuff, right? And from that, then on starts Sundar Khand, right? And Sundar Khand is so, so beautiful, uh, so, so holy and, you know, it's so effective. Uh, people say when you have problems in the family to read Sundar Khand, parayan, right? Do parayan of Sundar Khand, you know? And, um, once again, uh, you know, I don't want to miss saying this, Hanuman Chalisah by, um, my other mother, Emma Subba Lakshmi. When she sings it, I get goosebumps every time. And she says, uh, you know, no demon, nothing will, nothing will, no fear will come near you when you think of Lord Hanuman.
Thank you, Kumarji.
Yeah, thank you so much, Jai Shri Ram.
Your, uh, you know, emotions are pretty palpable when you talk about Hanumanji. And that's, and there's a reason I put some orange color here on the slide as well because he's orange, right? Uh, but yes, uh, one of the biggest advantages of reciting Hanuman Chalisah is that, you know, bhuta pisha chenikata nahi aave, that's my favorite line. So I use, I didn't know much of it, but at least I would, I would always remember that whenever I would pass through the dark. Um, I was young, but yes, Hanumanji is, uh, like, like I said, it's the, you know, the, the first of the eleven rudras. It's like Shiva Anshavatar only. And, uh, when we talk about in devotion, das ke das ke das, right? And we do devotion to Hanumanji, that is so pleasing to God as well, right? And even in the parikashtha of dasse bhav, the master forgets that he's a master and the das forgets he's a das, right? It all starts merging because Hanumanji would sit on top of Ram's head and all that can happen as well when you reach the peak of dasse bhav as well. And in fact, Swamiji in one of his ASAMX, I remember he said that the, the peak of dasse bhav is preem. You know, when you fructifies, it's not that. And then the peak of preem, the madhure bhav is the saichiri bhav. So that was kind of very profound statement for me. It's still, still not sunk into me to understand the prof, the true depth of it, but that's what he had said. So I was like, okay. Anyways, let's take some more hands. Yes, Monika ji, uh, with a cup of coffee or chai, you can explain, uh, about.
Water. Okay. No, that's water. Okay. Radha, radha, everybody. Uh, I, I wanted to kind of remind and reiterate and many people wouldn't know also the story also about Hanuman Gari Temple. I'm not sure if, you know, you have heard of it, but I'm pretty sure that you would love to hear it again. So this is the true incident that happened in nineteen ninety-eight where, uh, some Ayodhya being Ayodhya and, uh, you know, a place of faith. There were a few terrorists who planted, uh, bombs, uh, in temples. Hanuman Gari Temple is known, uh, is very famous because Hanumanji was blessed and was, uh, sort of asked by, uh, Ramji to protect Ayodhya at Hanuman Gari, which is why it is, it is very famous. So one of the, they, so the, the inspector's name was, I think Avinaa, if I'm not wrong, and there's a web series also on it. Um, so when they got the lead and when they found out, they were able to defuse and find and defuse few bombs. But the last bomb, they just couldn't trace it. It was placed in Hanuman Gari Temple, uh, behind a water filter. And when they found it, they, obviously they rushed towards the, uh, uh, that, that place. Uh, but then they, they couldn't locate where it is. Just before they reached it, just three seconds prior, three seconds prior, they saw a monkey pulling out those wires and cutting it, biting it. How would a monkey know what, which wire to bite? I mean, it's, it's, it's very normal. It's pretty normal in Ayodhya, you know, these kind of miracles. But this was something that, uh, you know, people who don't have faith or, you know, who are always in doubt, they were taken aback that this just cannot be a coincidence, right? This gave me goosebumps and I, I saw that, uh, series also on, on television. But then I thought I'll, I'll just bring this up.
Thank you for bringing that. Yeah, those kind of things do happen. And then we think it was one of those things, but if you think deeply about it, of course, you know, a monkey tearing apart wires that if, even if one connection goes wrong, it will be a massive blast, right? And doing it to perfection.
And Hanumanji gave them enough time, Nithinji, just three seconds prior when he knew that, okay, now I think I'll have to intervene. He did it and then he just quietly climbed on top of Hanuman Gari Temple like he always does and sat there. So Jai Shri Ram, Jai Hanuman.
Yeah. Thank you for narrating that story. Jai Shri Ram, Jai Hanuman. Yes, Sapana ji.
Radha, radha, Nikinji and everyone. Happy Hanuman Jayanti. Um, I was going to share the same story that Kumarji said, you know, I just learned at nine o'clock. Yeah. When, um, Hanumanji appears upon his chest and shows, uh, uh, you know, uh, Ram and, uh, Ram and Sita. Um, the other thing I had was, uh, it's a little question. Um, what is the relation with, like, what is it with beetle leaves? Why do people offer beetle leaves to Hanumanji? That was my question.
Beetle leaves, I think there's something related to it. Shav bhaks and talk about it, right? Um, Monika ji is saying, yes, yes, she is going to explain that to you and he is rudra. So maybe that's why beetle leaves are offered to him as well. If somebody knows the story about beetle veal patra, I think there is a story I had known, uh, why it is favorite to Lord Shiva. But if you remember it, please narrate it. Uh, that was out of syllabus for me, so I didn't revise it today.
Thank you for the saffron story and that, I didn't know that.
Yeah, my pleasure. Um, we'll come back to that beetle leaf story, uh, Pratisha. We'll go and then let's take, quite a few people have raised their hands today. And please fill out the feedback tracker if you have any more question or want to discuss because we have a hard stop at ten today. So maybe a minute each to all of you. And feedback tracker, please also fill it out. Yes, Pratisha, go ahead.
Um, radha, radha, everyone. Happy Hanuman Jayanti. Actually, I wanted to, uh, say a very personal, uh, thing about Lord Hanuman. Like, there has been a incident in, like, a period of my life where I was not praying to any god. So that included, uh, a time period where I was wanting a child and I was not having. So one day my mother locked into me on the phone. I was not even lighting a lamp. So she said that I will ask you something. Will you do it? So I said, yes. I didn't even say, ask what? And she asked me to chant Hanuman Chalisah. And I had to learn it from the starting. And, uh, I was, at that time I was in India. I went back to US and I started chanting. I learned it first of all. I was chanting like eight, nine times in a day just to learn it. And after exactly hundred days, I got my false pregnancy. So they say, jo shatk bar partikar koi shakmi hundred times, chhute hi bandi mahasukh ho is, jo yeha padhe Hanuman Chalisah. Jo yah paray Hanuman Chalisah, who is the deity of the god, like god, lord goddess Parvati is, Sakshi, she's saying that. You will get what you want, so that was a very powerful person, uh, thing, which made me spiritual. And, uh.
Copy of faith that worked, uh, because. It's a journey of faith and it can do miracles, right, and when it says even a faith.
And I was not, I was not even praying, I was like, I was not, I just left everything and then. Just because my mother-in-law said I was praying and.
That's good, thank you for narrating that story and these kind of, it reinforces our faith. Okay, a minute each, quite a few hands are there, so if you can limit it to a minute or so, that will be good, that way we can cover everybody and in the meantime, please fill out the feedback tracker as well, yes, Sandhya, go ahead.
Yes, Radhe, Radhe, I mean, thank you for sharing these stories and, you know, in addition to the Das Se Bhav aspect. I also feel this surrender, uh, he's, he's like the greatest example of how one should surrender to God and this, uh. Chutki story that you said, uh, that there was, there is this bhajan that I had heard during my childhood. Ki tere prabhu jaante hai baat ghath ghath ki bajaye ja tu pyare Hanuman Chutki. So that is very like, bahut pyara bhajan hai and like last thing, uh, like I also imagine him to be one of the cutest. Diverties of Lord Ram, like his, unki jitne bhi leelas hoti thi, they used to be really, really. Uh, cute as well as part, as a surrendered child of, uh, Lord Ram, so there was one Leela in which. Uh, Sita Mata had invited him for, uh, offering food in the, in her kitchen. She kept on making food, he kept on eating all delicacies, uh, it was just not enough and then she ended up asking Lord Ram. How can I satiate, uh, your bhakta Hanuman and then Lord Ram said that on a leaf, uh, tulsi leaf. I think if you write Ram, uh, and give that to him, he will be satiated and that's what exactly that had happened, so that was also.
Nice, good story, thank you, today we're learning a lot of things about Lord Hanuman, so that's the best way to celebrate his birthday, yes, Vinoji, very quick. Still have eight minutes. Vinoji, you always play with Hanumanji's name in Pahoot, so please go ahead, we'd love to hear from you, Minuji has given you the permission, now you can go ahead.
Twenty eleven, we had the option to go and visit our relatives in Mumbai or go and attend the Chitra Kurshival with Swamiji. So we did that and all those Leelas were there, that's wonderful, I'll be brief, there's, uh. Hanuman. Uh, what is that word? Uh, the mountain, the, Hanumanji was, uh, feeling very hot and he, and Sitaji said, what do you want? And he asked for the fountain, I think water, I'm not sure about the story, anyways. There were four hundred steps up the mountain and Minuji wanted no part of it, but she made it up all the way. And then at the top of the mountain, there's, uh, Hanumanji's mandir and guess what? I was given Prashad ladus by, uh, by Pandaji and as soon as I took those. A monkey comes and grabs those, a couple of ladus from my hand and I'm not kidding you. That the monkey was there for almost five minutes. Giving us time to take a video and pictures, I will show that to you sometime, so this is the kripa of. Hanumanji.
Good night. Jai Shri Ram.
Jai Bhajan.
Thank you very much for, I remember when I went to Vrindavan, last trip. There's so many monkeys there, so one of the best things was when there was an auto person, it was a sight to behold, I mean, if I cannot, of course, articulate it because. It, you just had to be there to experience that, you know, the funniness around it, so this guy's tope was taken by a monkey. So when his tope was taken, so this, and these days, those monkeys, they are loving fruities there in Vrindavan, okay, there is a fashion that they pick up, so these days it's a fruity, so. Immediately the moment he put his tope, he grabbed a fruity from the nearby shop without even buying it, he'd grabbed the fruity, he kept it in front of him. And the monkey, he just looked at him, he gave him the fruit in one hand, grabbed the tope and grabbed the fruity also and monkey was very upset. That he lost both of them and gave the fruity back and he said, okay, let's go, it was like, okay, it happens every day, but if you had seen those two minutes, it was like. Too good, but yeah, anyways, monkeys, uh, uh.
One more thing.
Hanumanji in them, okay.
Hanuman Dara is the mountain and monkey talking about monkey at their Ram temple. Uh, a monkey took one of the slippers of some lady and then like you said, the. The people who were there gave him something and he brought the slipper back.
If you want, if you have, uh, something valuable with you, these days they are going after mobiles because they have figured out in Vrindavan. That mobile is something everybody has in hand, so they will grab that and you offer them fruity and they'll trade it with you. Okay, they have figured it out, that game plan, but so be prepared with carrying a lot of fruities with you if you want to, you know, lose something there and it happens, I mean, I saw that in Vrindavan. Anyways, let's take a couple of hands, Tejas, go ahead, please, and then Puja is there and Keshav, please, there, go ahead.
Yeah, Radhe, Radhe, everyone, uh, thank Pichindi for sharing all the stories of Hanuman, uh, like, the, the, anyone who know, what is, where is the birthplace of Hanuman?
The birthplace of Hanumanji.
Uh, yeah, it's in a place called Kishkinda, which is in Hampi, which is in the state where I'm from, Karnataka. Yeah, Kishkinda is in, uh, present day Hampi, so, uh, that's where Hanumanji was born, actually, there's a hill called Anjan, Anjanaya Adhi Hill. And that's why in, in, uh, in Karnataka, they call him Anjanaya also, as, uh, as the name.
That's nice, I think it's a mere coincidence you are in our session today because we have, I've met at least the first person who is born at the same place as Hanumanji, so. Welcome to the.
Oh, I was born in Bangalore, but it's like, this, it is the same state, I think maybe it's about, uh. Six, seven, five hundred kilometers away from Bangalore, it's quite far, it's in the north part of Karnataka, but Kishkinda was where he was born.
Thank you for sharing.
And as a, yeah, and as a question, does anyone of you know the story of Panchamukhi, like, uh, there is, uh, his, yeah, I thought like. If someone knows the story, I don't know the story, like I've seen like.
Ujaji knows the story, she said, yes, so go ahead, Ujaji, we have to, to finish off the story and, and what you want to share, so let's hear from Puja as well.
Radhe, Radhe, everyone, Radhe, Radhe, Nithin Bhaiya, uh, Tejas, correct me if I'm wrong, wherever if I, you know, go wrong, but then for Panchamukhi Avatar. This was one avatar which Hanumanji took when Ahiravan, Ram, uh, Ravan's brother. Uh, he used to saying Patalok, what he does is because he's a.
Patalok is, is US only, okay, it has become, come out now, okay.
Okay, so what Ravan does is because Ahiravan is Mahamaya's biggest devotee, so Ravan tells Ahiravan, who is Ravan's younger brother. Uh, that you can capture Ram and Lakshman and, uh, you know, it's like. Behchadaadena on Mahamaya, so this is what you can do with Ram Lakshman, uh, so what he does is, he captures both of them. Takes them to Patalok and hides them, uh, so what Hanumanji does is, uh, after getting all the, uh. Uh, you know, information from Vibhishan, he goes to Patalok and it's because everything works reverse in Patalok, you know, fire, it has its. So what fire does is basically burns things, but in Patalok it starts cooling down things, likewise, uh, in Patalok, gravity would not try to pull things down, it will just. Throw things upward, so what Hanumanji does is, uh, he takes the Panchamukhi Avatar and he has. You know, his each face towards different direction, like his Garud face would be towards either east side or Hanuman face would be towards the front side or. Probably, you know, this is how he takes the Panchamukhi Avatar, Hani, um, kills Ahiravan and gets Ram induction back.
Thank you, Puja, on editing that story, I think that was the only missing piece today, we have run out of time, Keshav ji, I think like we pass on the baton, we will pass. Pass you on to the next session, so you can tell us the Hanuman story or what you had to share, if you want to do it real quick, sixty seconds, please go ahead.
Jai Shri Ram, Jai Hanuman, very simple thing. Humare pur- prane time pe naam ka bada meaning hota tha. What is the meaning of Hanuman?
Like Spiderman, Superman, we have.
So Hanuman, jisne apne man ka hanan kar diya, wo Hanuman. Aur jab uska man hi nahi hai, to abhi man nahi hai, abhi man nahi hai to ego nahi hai. To aur kya chahiye, phir o manne kya hai bhai kisi se, radhe, radhe.
Thank you so much, I think you just wrapped it up in time and I think we covered so many things about Hanumanji personally. We've never, you know, spent time, so much time on Hanuman Chanti, but today was, I mean, I learnt a lot of new things as well, so thank you again. For a fascinating, engaging discussion with each one of you and especially the ones who turned on their videos. Uh, with that, I look forward to seeing you tomorrow, Radhe, Radhe and happy Hanuman.
We have Radhe, Radhe.
We have Ajay.
Next class also.
Sairamji will run the class today, okay, over to you, Sairamji, then, Radhe, Radhe.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Tejas will be joining us.